Thanks, everyone, for coming. Crystal, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes, Mayor Moss. Councilmember Conyers is absent. Councilmember Gillian is present. Councilmember Brennan is present. Mayor for Tim is present, and Councilman Cornwall is present.
Thank you. At this time, if you'll please rise, Pastor John Sherman, ex-Pastor John Sherman, I guess, is going to lead us into invocation and the pledge.
Let's do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, let's throw in our hearts. So, Emily, Father, thank you for this opportunity to gather in freedom and in this land that we love. And while we're mindful of our own land, we're mindful of the land of Israel and the conflict taking place there. Your Scripture says to pray for the peace of Jerusalem. And so, we pray for the peace there and that there would be a cascade of peace around the world as a result, that you would just perform a miracle and issue him in peace. Your Scripture says, "You, O Lord, are a shield about us and the lifter of our heads." So, may we ask also that you would be a shield about our own nation and especially about our own city here. And I do pray before the leaders whom I have great respect for, thank you for the way they are navigating the flourishing of our community. And I pray that you give them the Spirit of wisdom and collaboration so that they can continue to do so, to make decisions that are wise and full of forethought and insight, and that will lead to the flourishing of our community. That's my prayer. And so, I lift that up on the great name of our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we have a proclamation honoring Teachers' Day that I would like to read. Stand up and read this. We have a lot of respect for teachers. The City of Willow Park future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students. Teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. Teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students. Our Willow Park teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during the COVID-19 crisis. Our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Willow Park City Council joins Teachers' Can and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers' Day and proclaims October 5, 2023, to be City of Willow Park Teachers' Day. Be it further resolved that the City of Willow Park City Council encourages members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside your homes or businesses the week of October 5 as a symbol of support for our educators. Thank you. And we will get that to the school. I think we have another.
This is a proclamation honoring domestic violence awareness. In the City of Willow Park, the recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence providers, and victim service providers. Our Johnsons, since their active participation in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Freedom House and other committed organizations to work toward the elimination of intimate partner violence. In just one day across the USM's territories, nearly 75,000 victims of domestic violence assault services from domestic violence programs and shelters. At the same day, more than 9,000 requests for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation could not be provided because programs lack the resources to meet these needs. The impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community, throughout the United States and the world. Racism, home code, trans code, racism, and discrimination based on physical building, nationality, or other factors that perpetuate domestic violence can find its safety even more difficult for some people. The need for safe house continues to be rated as survivors' most urgent need. The City of Willow Park joins with others across Texas and the nation in supporting business of domestic violence as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to users that domestic violence is not tolerated in Willow Park. Domestic violence impacts millions of people each year and can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems. Each whose number-one thing is a valuable and powerful component to transforming our communities. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Doyle Moss, in the City of Willow Park, hereby proclaim my shoulder level as domestic violence awareness.
Thank you so much.
She's got one over here.
Yes, we can take one over here as well.
We might be able to see this.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Item number one is to approve city council meetings, council minutes of the council meeting September 12, 2023. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council minutes of the meeting September 12, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to repeal the existing utilities ordinance contained in Chapter 13 Utilities of the City Code of Ordinances and Restate, amend and adopt a new Chapter 13 Utilities Ordinance. Michelle.
To begin with, just like y'all know, this was not so much of a re-ride and reorganization of everything that was in there. There is some stuff that's changed. Crystal, look at me for meaning when I think the last time anything was done was the 1990s. So, it was time for an update. So, I'm just going to do a brief. If I have questions, stop me, okay? Chapter one or section one is the general section. Throughout the entire ordinance was billing topics on different matters. We've taken all of them. We've moved it to the general section. They're now coherent because we had different dates on different stuff. So, now we're all aligned with what should be and what we've been doing. Water did not change. Sewer reference water. And when I say that, I mean, you would read through it. It would say water lines, not sewer lines. We now have water lines. Solid waste did not change. Private wells did not change. The OSSF, which is the On-Site Sewer Facilities, we did change. TCQ contacted me a couple of months back. And it was like, we're doing an audit of our records. We have a CQ meeting. The last one we had on file was the ADA eight. Can you send us a new one? We sent it to them. It was approved in 14, and they had some issues with it. So, this is taking the ADA eights into 14 and combining them. Takes out some of the complications and confusions that TCQ had. And they are now good with it. So, we're moving it forward with this. Impact fees did not change. The pollution control near public toilets did not change. The drought plan, the one that was in the ordinance was the one that I believe was passed in 14. The one that was done for us to get Fort Worth water was done by a resolution. So, we now move that into the ordinance. Cross-connection control, there was one change, but we did back it up a little bit. TCQ has a different interpretation of EPK than the plumbing code does. That's the easiest way, I think, to say this. Irrigation systems are supposed to have a backflow converter on them. How often that backflow converter depends on if you go by plumbing code or TCQ. TCQ says annually. Plumbing code says they can go up to five years. Bill and I have been bringing, have been back and forth. And just for everyone's mental, we think we'll just test to go to five years. So, you won't have to, if you have inspected every five years, you won't have to do it every single year. And last, it has additives in that, is one thing I want to clarify. So, if you have an irrigation system, they automatically put early layer. That is a requirement that must be tested annually. There was no changes to the drainage or drainage impact fees. Pat slipped over. I made no changes after he got it back to me. Y'all have any questions?
So, we need an action to accept the updated Code of Ordinances.
To adopt.
To adopt the ordinance. Okay. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance reorganizing, renumbering, restating, and amending Chapter 13 Utilities of the Willow Park City Code of Ordinances, providing the following regulations governing utilities. General provisions, a public works director, a water system, a sewer system, solid waste, private water wells, onsite sewage facilities, impact fees, pollution control near public water supply wells, drought contingency and emergency water management, cross-connection control, drainage, drainage impact fees, providing for penalties for violations of the ordinance in the amount of $500, providing a repealer clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Next item, to approve a resolution amending the advance funding agreement between Texas Department of Transportation and the City of Willow Park for the Kingsgate Bridge.
Mayor, Council, this next agenda item is a resolution to amend the advance funding agreement for the Kingsgate Bridge. The city owns a bridge located on Kingsgate Road over Clearport, Minneapolis. On March 10, 2021, the city, the state, and the city entered into an advance funding agreement to remove and replace this bridge. Well, it's become necessary to amend that agreement. The city requested that the bridge be widened to match our new concrete roadway, Kingsgate Road. And so, we need to amend that agreement to reflect the additional width of the new structure. Included in the packet are copies of the resolution and a copy of the advance funding agreement amendment number one.
Council, let me also interject. The Ranch House Road project, that is the match on this project, and that's somewhere around $273,500, I want to say. And this amendment will go to 184. So, it's part of that 273. So, there will be no additional costs. This is part of our match. So, there'll be no additional cost on this project.
So, we're amending the agreement?
You're amending the agreement, right, to widen the road, the bridge. And I believe that they're looking at letting this in July of...
2024.
Of 2024.
Yes, still going. Texas does working on the 60% plans. We had a meeting with the utilities, well, with Texas Gas. There's some conflicts there, but it looks like we'll be able to relocate a gas main. So, and we were waiting on final right-of-way documents from Texas so that we can start with the right-of-way acquisition. So, that's kind of where we are.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution of the City of Willow Park, Texas, amending the advance funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for Kingsgate Bridge.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to approve and adopt a City of Willow Park's Parks and Trails Master Plan addendum. Tony.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The original Parks and Trails Master Plan was adopted by Council on October 8 of 2019. And January 24 of '23, we brought to you that Bearhampton Brown was proposing to do an amendment to the Parks and Trails Master Plan, which was incorporating realistic trails as opposed to a line drawn from here to there of where we thought that might be. So, in order to narrow that down and get that more precise, we went ahead and had Bearhampton Brown do that. So, the Council approved for them to do that. And at the August 1 Parks meeting, we discussed this. And Larry provided, Larry Colvin, from Senior Planner for Bearhampton Brown, presented the addendum to the Parks Plan, which they recommended that we go ahead and bring the Council to have this adopted. And so, Larry is here this evening to give you a presentation for that. We did leave you goodies. This is the, Bearhampton Brown has been so kind as to give us handouts of these. So, I've been giving these out to developers and to parties so that they can see that we're serious about this. It really kind of puts us on the map. And then, also in your packet, he did also provide the design for the skills area that we're looking to put in Kingsgate Park. And so, the quick update on that, before we start trails there, is that we were waiting on Texas Way of Way for the King's Gate Bridge in order to give that to the engineers for the final plating of the park and then we can move closer for that. So, as soon as that happens, then we can move on to the phase of the trails. Any questions before you take some away?
Very, very exciting.
Thank you, Tony. My name's Larry Colvin. I'm the president of the Willow Park Mountain Bike Club and also the designer for Bearhampton Brown. And I wrote this amendment. Been working on this project for a long time. So, I'm really excited for this guy to happen. But the brochure and the document, I feel, very concise and thorough. I think it answers a lot of questions as to why we're doing this amendment and also what it's going to provide to Willow Park. Is, in my opinion, it's a really great document because what's great about it is it's something that engineers, architects, and planners, land developers, and commercial developers can bring into their software and that can actually plan a development around this trail's plan. These documents, these CAD files, these trail alignments can be brought into the software that these developers use. And it's going to be a big, it's going to be a big job, a big head start in us being able to create trails and parks and open spaces in Willow Park. Now, I always like to tell people that with these files, I can upload them into my phone, and we can go virtually like this trail tonight if we wanted to do that. That's what kind of comprehensive information that we have. So, I don't want to really go through the whole document. I think you guys can read it at your leisure. You know, I'm always open for any phone calls or questions or anything like that. But I think it's a really exciting opportunity for Willow Park. I know a lot of communities around Willow Park that have shared this information with that are excited about it as well. So, does anybody have any questions?
This will start in Alito.
I'm sorry?
It'll start in Alito, is that correct?
Yes. Now, we already have, the club has two trails in Alito. We have the trail in downtown Alito. It's called the pit. It's a kids' skills area, very similar to what you see on the screen up there. It's a, it's a kids' area. It was put on an old tennis court and has probably a half a mile of single track on it. And from there, you can go off to the Parks of Alito Trail, which is inside residential development. We just opened a 2.6-mile addition of that trail. So, it's up to like 12.3, 3.5 miles. And then, from there, you can ride down Jenkins to Bankhead, 130, 200, to get to Kingsgate Park. We'll be building this skills area. And we want to continue building trail all the way north up Crown Road to tie into the biplanes that will take you onto Westlake Drive and over to Quanta Hill. The club, the Weatherford Mountain Bike Club, we're lobbying the City of Weatherford pretty heavily to have a bond election to build a paved trail, bikeway around Lake Weatherford. But right now today, it's a very active bicycle route, and people leave and ride it. So, if you go out there on the weekends in particular, it's not unusual to see a lot of people on bicycles. So, the whole route, the whole route, if you part to downtown Alito and start riding, you ride up through, around Lake Weatherford and back, it's a 26-mile loop. And we hope one day to have a number of mountain bike clubs along that route. And that's what this plan conceptualizes. I did, I did something I thought was kind of interesting that I, this, if you turn into your brochure, it works about. This map right here is called, down the lower running side, it'll say Sheep One, that hot trail. This area in red that represents the ETJ and city limits of Willow Park. And it's my understanding that Willow Park is such the largest city in Parker County. And I was curious, well, how many acres is it? It's over 7,400 acres. And so, then I thought, well, I have the information. I wonder how much parkland Willow Park has. Even the facilities that they dedicate for water wells, for city hall, police stations, fire departments, it's, it's just over 60 acres. So, unless, it's like 0.8% of Willow Park is dedicated to community facilities. So, that's what's great about this trails plan is we can, we can correct that. We can get those community facilities, those park facilities, those outdoor spaces, we can start increasing that. And I think that's a, it's a good, it's a good goal for us to create more outdoor spaces and all. So, any other questions?
When do you expect to start on the trail?
We're waiting on, obviously, to transfer the land from the Wilkes-Barre to the City of Willow Park. And we also have a license agreement between the City of Willow Park and the Weatherford Mountain Bike Club that needs to be ratified. And once those two documents get taken care of, you know, we can start moving dirt. In the meantime, next month, November 1, there's an application period with the International Mountain Bicycle Association. There's a $10,000 grant that the club wants to go after. We're going to present these conceptual plans to member and apply for grant application. And we're hopeful that we'll win that grant. It'll be a matching grant. We'll have to raise $5,000, and then in the end, we'll match it with another $5,000. So, it'll be a great head start for us. So, our goal is to build this trail with no city tax dollar at all. And if we can get all the paperwork done, we can get started by the end of the year. But for sure, we'll get started by the beginning of that slippery progress.
And Tony will see that we have everything we need to move forward. I think it's exciting. I appreciate your help. Seem like we've been working on this forever.[1690.21][1690.21][laughter]
It's been a long time.
Well, I appreciate your help and work on it. Any questions for Larry or do we have a motion? This is very exciting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Willow Park Parks and Trails Master Plan addendum.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Larry, again, Tony, everyone involved, appreciate it very much. I'm excited. Next item, to award a bid for the City Bank Depository Services. Ms. Candy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. The RFP for depository services was issued on August 22 of '23. The responders to the RFP were First Financial Bank, Texas Bank, and Capital Bank. Brian, Jake, and I reviewed the RFPs. We compared branch locations, account structures, interest rates, and account fees, among other items in the RFPs. Stack recommends First Financial Bank because it's negative as a deposit.
Thank you, Candy. Any other questions or do we have a motion?
I move to accept the contract from First Financial Bank for depository services for the City of Willow Park.
Thank you. Second?
Second. Go ahead.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Candy. To approve, next item, to approve the 2324 city holiday schedule. To approve, next item, to approve the 23-24 city holiday schedule. Bill?
Staff, this is, staff, I'm sorry. Usually address staff, I don't usually address council. Mayor and council, this is the holiday schedule. This is the same schedule that we've had this previous year. I think the Juneteenth holiday was added this previous year, and, but it's to be observed, but it's the same schedule.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the holiday schedule as presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. To approve an amendment to the School Resource Office Agreement, Officer Agreement between the City of Willow Park and Trinity Christian Academy. Ms. Candy.
Good evening. We received a call from Gary Squires with Trinity Christian Academy requesting that they be allowed to make their payments in quarterly payments versus an annual payment. The contract does state that they pay an annual payment. He says it's tough for them to pull that much fund, that many much funds together at one time for a payment, so that is the reason for the request. And staff is recommending that we allow them to make quarterly payments on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, or do we have a motion?
I move to approve the request from Trinity Christian Academy to make quarterly payments for the SFO services provided by the City of Willow Park.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to remove a sewer lien placed against the property located at Block 56, Lot 1 of the El Chico Edition, more commonly known as 116 Ranch House Road.
Council, Benny's presented these to you in the past, this one is just a little bit different. This is Roy Monde Deo, I'm not saying that incorrectly. These liens were placed in '93, '94, with the sewer line down Canyon Court, and then between the church and Water Burger, and without civilization, we call it Beers Creek. Roy's property is actually not on the corner of Canyon Court in Ranch House, he is the property behind it, and a lien was placed on his property when these were done. We're not sure why there was not a stubout for sewer made for him like there was on the others. After a discussion with Roy, we could either put him on sewer if he chose to, or, you know, we could come to council and see if y'all would be willing to let go of this lien. He has requested that if y'all would let go of the lien, it would be very much appreciated. He has no intentions of getting into the city sewer anytime soon. It would be more of a hassle for him to get on, didn't, didn't stay in on sewer, but at this point, so we're asking that y'all release the lien.
Okay. Any other questions, or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to remove the sewer lien placed against the property located at Block 56, Lot 1 of the El Chico Edition, more commonly known as 116 Ranch House Road.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item is an ordinance, amending ordinance 859-22 Development Services Fee Schedule. Ms. Tony.
Mayor and Council, we are amending ordinance 859-22, which was last year's ordinance that was consolidating development fees that were pretty much dispersed between the ordinances. And this year, we're changing them in, due to legislative and economic changes, we separated the utility fees on their own schedule. Last meeting, we did that. And then with ours, we're adding back in the administrative fees that got removed around recently last year, they were put on the other schedule. So we're putting them back on ours because sometimes we have administrative fees also that are involved in that. And then the legislature, the major thing we're changing, we've updated some of them, they just simply were a little bit lower than they needed to be, and then we added some in, the site development plan application fee and the site development inspection fees. We didn't have those in there at all. What we had was a site plan fee, which we don't do anymore. We include that as part of the site plan, the site development fees now. And so we were way low on that because we spent an enormous amount of time on that. So we did include that, as long as a few other things that we added in there and increased some fees pretty much across the board. The biggest thing that changed here is the legislature changed how we calculate many of our permit fees, the way that we calculate the valuations, and so that had to change by the legislature. So that was the major part of the change for this, but the rest of them was just updating the fees. We did check with other cities that are comparable sizes to us, that were in alignment with where all their fees are as well, so we didn't, yeah, it's not gouging by any stretch.
So we're just amending the ordinance?
Correct. So amending the development fees that were in there with the CSD.
Okay. Any questions for Tony, or do we have a motion, please?
Do we want the caption read?
Yes. Would you like to convert it?
Sure.
Who'd make the motion first?
Read the caption for the ordinance, and I'll make the motion to agree with you.
An ordinance, the City of, the City Council of the City of Willow Park, Texas, amending development services fee schedules, including fees for building permits and inspections, miscellaneous permits, other inspections, old plane reviews, and irrigation permits, onsite sewage facility permits, and repair permits, oil and gas well permits, demolition permits, science permits, health permits, fire permits, and cert, fire permits and services, including fire alarm review, fire safety code, plan review, and additional fire code review in inspections. Special event permits, code enforcement, and services, and many various city ordinances providing a repair clause, providing a separability clause, and providing an effective date.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Any council comments?
I noticed that Crown Road seems to be open.
Crown Road is open.
Good job.
Very good.
And any update on when, is it Bass, San Bass will be started?
We meet with the property owners tomorrow morning between 9:00 and 12:00 on San Bass, and we'll meet them and talk about their approaches. I think, Dretchen, you still here? We have about 20, and so far, we have 12 that will be home tomorrow morning, and then the others, we will meet with them as, you know, soon as we possibly can. But San Bass should be underway in, we're, yeah, we got to finish Kings Gate, and once Kings Gate is open completely, then we'll go to San Bass.
Okay, anything else? I like to thank the council, the job they're doing. I like to thank the staff, the job they're doing. I think we have a great group of people, the council, staff, and I'm happy to be a small part of it. So anything else, or do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion, second. All in favor? Meeting dismissed.